As long as.
No.
We're.
Yeah, it's recording, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna start telling Ben to. Alright, so we are live.
We're recording.
So we are not live?
It's not on Facebook right now.
Okay.
But it's recorded.
I will call the Sartell City Council meeting for Monday, July eighth to order. Of note, we are not live, but we are recording and will publish that. Please stand for pledge of allegiance. Council, next order of business for us tonight is the agenda review and adoption. I'll look for a motion on that. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Open forum, public comment, we do have one registered tonight. Mister Peter Wilson, invite you to step forward, state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, is there a timer up there?
I've got it on.
Okay, thanks. Hi, Peter Wilson, eleven zero eight, Celebration Drive, Sartell, Minnesota, five six three seven seven. I wanna talk on the low income housing presentation that was done here a little bit ago. Last few weeks or month or two. As I've thought about this more and more, and I've spoken out against these on an ongoing basis for a long time, especially in St. Cloud, I question much about this. One of the things, and I'm not certain where the line is drawn, but is who owns this? What are the investors? What is their intent? What is their past history? Is it bad? Is it good? Do they care? Do they maintain things? Does the system run correctly? Again, exposing, if possible, all of the names, not just the legal entities, the members of a LLC or an LLP, the owners of the corporation, the officers, whoever it may be, or the individuals. And lay it on the counter, no more hiding stuff. Again, maybe it's not permissible. I have minor ownership in three restaurants, two down in Iowa and one up in Michigan. And in Iowa, wanted a liquor license. There, I had to fill out individual forms, I don't know if they were made public, it doesn't matter to me. But again, sometimes information is available in multiple sources. Never even been into either, any of them. Again, another thing to bring up is who finances it? Again, individually, they can finance things that are, they permissibly can, or that make sense, but are there certain slumlord financiers that do these? Another thing, having seen these operations and spoken out against them in different places, is it gets down to being, why do so many people show up here? Why are they making money? What is it that they do? How are they paid that makes them wanna come here and incent you to do this? I don't think it's because they pick up pop cans here. So, another thing is, will this be a haven for illegal aliens? Another thing is, why four bedroom apartments that were mentioned? And again, I don't know how firm that was, whether it was just a comment, or it was kind of like throwing a fish in lure out to see if something would hit on it. Again, I don't wanna, I would call much of these things, having seen who owns them in the area. Not always, it's not the apartment complex themselves, it's the low income ones. Tends to be oftentimes the donor class of some political parties, or those with an economic incentive other than what you would think. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, next item on our agenda is the approval of city council minutes from June twenty fourth, regular council meeting. I'll take a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those carry. Next, consent agenda, we have items A through E. Is there a motion on consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Items A through E, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Onto old business, we have ditch thirteen in Grizzly Lane, plan approval and authorization to bid.
As they're bringing that up, council, good evening. As Mayor Fitzsim said this evening, for your consideration are the plan approvals for the ditch thirteen stabilization project and the Grizzly Lane Conveyance Improvements Project. As we're bringing that up, I did wanna note that we provided an update to residents via ClearGov with the plan approval that is before you tonight. Last week, we did receive a number of emails, phone calls, and even had a recent meeting with a number of residents just with concerns about the project. So just wanna share with council that we are hearing about this project. People advocating on both sides for wanting the project and then also having concerns with the project. Because of that, I don't normally go into the background of a project or a plan approval, but I do intend to do that tonight on a couple slides before we ask for that final approval. I'll keep going here as we bring the slides up. You're all very familiar with the project, and the reason the project is taking place. Over the past couple years, we've had three very significant rainfall and snowmelt events which caused significant flooding within the Grizzly Lane area. Those events caused property damage, and because of that, residents in the area advocated to study and do something about the flooding that was occurring in that area. So back in twenty twenty-two, council did authorize a study for this project. And we took a very in-depth dive into the flooding that was occurring, why it was occurring, and then potential solutions to mitigate the flooding in that area. The ditch thirteen conveyance is about eight thousand lineal feet within the city limits. Most of it is an open ditch. There is six hundred feet of that conveyance or that drainage way that is currently piped through two forty-eight inch pipes. That section of ditch that's being conveyed through those pipes is creating a bottleneck, which is what then is causing the flooding. So, the recommendations then from that analysis were kind of twofold approach or two phased approach. The first phase would be restoring that open ditch within that six hundred foot conveyance, eliminating the bottleneck, recognizing that that thing can have impacts in other areas of the drainage way or the watershed. Council authorized additional analysis of the area. And the recommendation was to do a phase two, which is a diversion upstream of this to help mitigate some of those other impacts within the entire watershed. So I'll just click through, this is the flooding issue. I did put a top project timeline for you to see. I'm not gonna go through these bullet point by bullet point, what I wanted to highlight is the red text are the flooding events, the green text is when there was either a neighborhood meeting or a letter was sent out, or communication, or a website update on the city, essentially where we had correspondence with property owners. As I mentioned, the project started back in twenty twenty-two when the neighborhood asked the city to start looking into this. In the spring of twenty twenty-three, residents in the area reached out to their local politicians and advocated for funding to get a project in the ground. Those politicians reached out to the city, city said we needed, requested seven million to do the project at hand. Later found out a few months after session, that the city was awarded two point five million to do a flood mitigation project in this area. So then, in late twenty twenty-three, council authorized the design of the improvements that are in front of you today. So twenty twenty-four, lots of ClearGov updates, we've been meeting with individual property owners about some easement needs, also to talk about specifics about any questions or the concern they have about the project. What I wanna highlight on this slide is, the upper right-hand corner was the plan or general solution when you authorized preliminary or final design at the December eleventh meeting in twenty twenty-three. Very much mimics and is similar to the final plan set that's in front of you today, which is shown on the bottom. One question we were getting a lot over the last week is, why the ditch is not centered on the property line? And the reason being is, the existing easement that's there today is skewed. It is not centered on the property line, so that top image, the blue lines are the property lines and that red shaded area is the existing easement that's in place that we have to work within. Current design is shown on the bottom, the bold dash line is that easement location where you can see the proposed ditch is within that easement area. So, for the plan approval, budget perspective, first three items on there included the design analysis, design, plan approval is tonight, and then construction estimates, we do anticipate remaining within that two point five million budget with the proposed projects that are in front of you this evening. Ditch thirteen stabilization project is the first project, these are separate projects and will be bid separately. The goals of the stabilization project are to restore the ditch profile. The profile you see on there, the dash line is the existing profile today. Lots of sediment has accumulated in that drainage way and has created inefficiencies in how the water flows. We'd be restoring that profile back to its historic conditions, making it more efficient and more effective. We'd also be protecting the ditch, the toe of the ditch to prevent erosion, going in repairing some of the worst erosion areas, and really stabilizing it as best as we can within our budget. This is just a bunch of details on the different ways and approaches we'll be implementing within that ditch to help protect it and stabilize into the future. This is the Grizzly Area Conveyance Improvement Project. You can see this is the existing design, the blue dash line is the proposed ditch. That is where a current forty-eight inch pipe is today. The green line is a forty-eight inch pipe we're planning to retain. The red box is a proposed box culvert, nine foot wide by six foot high under thirteenth avenue. The red shaded areas are proposed easements that we are working with the property owners to obtain. Of note, we do not have the easements in place. Like I said, we have been meeting with property owners and we're working with them. So approval tonight would be contingent on obtaining those easements. In your packet, I also had that approval tonight would be contingent on obtaining permitting. As of the end of last week, we do have permits in place, a number of the residents advocated to the politicians who work with the DNR to help expedite that permit process. So we do have the DNR permits and the core permits in place, but we are still working on some of the easements. Tentative schedule for the ditch thirteen stabilization project. If approved at tonight's meeting and authorized to bid, we would start the bidding process. We would look for a ward of construction in August of this year, with construction taking place this fall. Project closeout, some final stabilization taking place in the spring of twenty twenty-five. The Grizzly Conveyance Improvements on a similar track. Bidding would occur after tonight if approved. A ward of construction would be looking for in August, construction this fall, and that would likely spill over into the spring just because of the size of the infrastructure of the box culvert and some other aspects. Before I take any questions, I would like to say, in meeting with a lot of residents, lots of concerns on both sides of this project, one way or another. There was a property owner that bought a property along the Grizzly Lane conveyance recently and was not aware or a part of this entire process. In meeting with them, there's been some input and direction that was given primarily along the shape of the ditch that led us to kind of the design you have in front of you today. And so I would also like to get approval with the flexibility to make some adjustments, minor adjustments to that ditch shape with the plan approval and contingent on those easements in order to maybe accommodate a little bit more some of the residents and what they would like to see in their backyard. So with that, I'd take any questions before asking for final plan approval contingent on easement acquisition and some flexibility in what that ditch shape might look like.
Council, any questions for engineering on this project? Tim?
Just April, a question on the easement. How apparent and when was the easement put in place? And just for the answer, I guess is just kind of question on where and how and when it was in place.
The easement was put in place with the original plat of the development. So since nineteen ninety-seven, the current easement that's in place was there.
Anything further, Tim?
Uh, no, that's.
Jill?
April, can you elaborate a little bit on the flexibility you're looking for as far as the easements?
Yeah, so currently in the plans, the ditch in the Grizzly area's got a three foot bottom. The north slope's at a two to one to tie in to where we are and protect the pipe. The other side right now is at a two to one for three feet deep, and then slopes back up at like a, I'm sorry, a two to one and then back up at a three to four to one. So just flexibility in how deep that ditch is at a steeper slope versus a flatter slope and a little bit just on the grades. So keeping the ditch there, we'd make sure that the capacity is there. You know, there could be an option to raise the ditch a little bit, to balance off some of the flood mitigation. So just some flexibility in what that ditch shape looks like and how that functions a little bit.
Are there safety concerns, or what is practically the concerns that are being brought forward?
Safety is the primary concern. The resident that recently bought that property has young children. Right now, that easement is seven and a half feet off of their patio, their concrete patio. And so with the current design, you've got your patio seven and a half feet, and then it goes at a three to one slope down for five feet, and then a two to one slope for three feet. So really a fairly steep hill then with a drop off. And so just talking with them, the different options we looked at during the design of doing a two to one slope the entire way up, which gives them some more yard space, but then you've got an eight foot drop off and just the different shapes that ditch can be where it will still convey, you know, a substantial amount of water compared to that forty inch pipe that's there now.
Got it. What, for the residents that are abutting that ditch, what is it, like what practically how will the backyards change, like beyond what you just described? For the, I think like eight or ten.
Currently, those backyards are fairly flat, they do slope gently. Ten to one, I know that probably doesn't mean a lot to people, but fairly flat towards their backyards. The backyards are roughly sixty to seventy feet of green space right now. We'd be taking up all but seven feet of that with the proposed ditch. So they would be losing a substantial amount of flat green space with the construction of this project. Again, building this ditch within that existing drainage and utility easement. Unfortunately, that utility easement does take up most of their property, you know, their backyard.
Yeah, thank you.
Follow up on that?
Yeah.
Is that a mowable upkeep? How is that gonna hold water? How is that ditch gonna look like?
So the ditch, if you look upstream and downstream of this area, has water flowing in it pretty consistently. So there would be water in the ditch, anywhere from half a foot to two feet, depending on the time of year. And then it would be grass. Generally, a four to one slope is considered mowable. So there are portions of the ditch on the south side that would be mowable, but there are some that get up to a three to one slope, which would be much more difficult to be mowable. So some tall grass is likely is what would grow there. When you have the large significant events, it would fill up much like you would see upstream and downstream with the ditch conditions that are there now.
And is that maintained by the owner, the homeowner, or is that something, who manages that ditch space?
I mean, if you go upstream and downstream, it's on the city's ditch system. I would say maintenance is minimal to, you know, public works went in two years ago on ditch thirteen and cleared out some of the deadfall and some other stuff that was impeding flow, but generally it stays in a natural state and is not regularly maintained.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, I just would support the flexibility as we move forward. And as you mentioned, they're losing quite a bit, so I think as much as we accommodate would be great. We all obviously see the need for the changes, but yeah, I'd support having the flexibility.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. Is there, from some of the flexibility that you're looking for, if you were to go a flatter slope and then a steeper drop off, would there be additional costs from fences or different things that you would need to put in there? Or that the homeowner would have to put in there, or, you know, just trying to think through when you're asking for flexibility and to give them the yard back, I would assume it'd be flatter and then a steeper drop off? Does that impact the functionality at all as well?
No, it really wouldn't impact the cost at all or functionality. We aren't planning on any, we're planning for any fences along the designed. Property owners, if they choose, can put up fences. If you, like I said, if you go upstream and downstream, some choose to, some not. So it's really just in flexibility and what the slope and the elevations of some of those grade changes would be. You know, whether they have more of a hill and then a deeper drop off, or, you know, less of the drop off and more of a steep slope back.
Of the two easements that are yet to be obtained, can you walk us through, like, are there alternatives if we're not able to obtain them, or where's that process?
We've met with both property owners in person, and we are working through those easements. We did make some changes based on those meetings with the property owners. Shifted that culvert is even further south, steepened up some of the slope so that we could move it south and take, or, you know, get less easement. Narrowed up the channel a little bit. We were looking at a ten foot wide, five foot deep culvert, we're now at a nine foot wide. And so next step would be finalizing those easement documents, meeting with them again, and starting the process to hopefully obtain signatures and those easements. I should note that along ditch thirteen, we do have a number of easements there as well. Those are temporary construction easements that would go away after construction. Allows us to come in and help shape the size of the slope a little bit and give us a little more room to work along the ditch. So the two up on your screen right now would be permanent easements. We would be in place forever, and the ditch thirteen easements would be temporary easements that would go away.
Mayor?
Yes.
One follow-up question to that. To Jed's point, if we don't get signatures and don't obtain it, then what happens with those easements? Or that, this whole process?
Yeah, well, we're hoping we can work with the property owners to obtain those, but we can't move forward with the project if we don't obtain those easements. The next step then would be working with legal to do condemnation to obtain those easements, which is a lengthier process and would push the project out. So being able to start this project this year, like we had hoped, will depend on getting these easements. Because they're separate projects, and this isn't why we did them as separate projects, it's just two different types of projects, ditch thirteen could still move forward if we got those temporary easements and be stabilized. But if we have difficulty obtaining these easements, it would delay the project.
All good questions asked, though, I'm trying to be repetitive here, but if you could touch on the timeline once again, I know, well, we've got a lot of rain lately, but I know the thought is spring flooding. Will most of it, looks like most of it's closed out, twenty twenty-five, just punchless items, but do we expect, again, contingent on getting easements, all that stuff moving forward, substantial construction will be completed this year, ready for spring of twenty twenty-five?
That is still the hope. The box culvert we have specked out is standard size, so we're not, we're hoping there's not a delay in getting that material, there's always that chance. But if we get those easements and we can award in August, as we hope to do with the schedule, majority of the construction would take place this fall, so that it would be in place for spring.
Okay. And then I would also commend, it seems like we're threading the needle really well of, how do we design it and construct it in a certain way that it will support spring flooding while also not taking up more backyards than needed? I appreciate the flexibility on it, I think I've heard from everyone, they support that. I know Rob's not here, so Ann, I'll defer to you on it, though. Where I see that box culvert, it's north of the stop sign three-way intersection. Is there any ability, as we're tearing the road up, to do that, that we're able to level out that intersection?
Do you wanna take a stab at it first, and then I'll speak to it if I need it?
Yeah, so from. So from a funding standpoint, I don't think we have the funds to expand road improvements to the south. We do have a grant application in place with the MPCA for some additional flood relief by doing some work on Grizzly, raising some elevations to try and prevent that roadway from flooding out like it has in the past, or at least at a much lesser severity. But I don't, at this point, I don't see the flexibility with the funds we have with that set of bids come in decent. There is a drainage benefit that could be experienced with doing that, and so we could do a change order at that time to include that if funds are available, but it's not included now within the project.
And when do you anticipate that paving actually happening? I mean, that would be a fall?
It would be a late fall paving for the first lift and we would do the second lift in spring.
I guess counsel, something to think about. I don't know that I'd want to put a motion as such, but my mind goes to having it called out as a bid option for the paving aspect of it, simply as we get into the fall and if there is an ability for us to fix a little bit of the pavement there. I just, I feel like the general public who doesn't navigate here is going to see new asphalt in a very confined area and wonder what we were thinking by not doing it another forty yards south at an intersection. And so I'd just love to understand what that alternative cost would be, but any thoughts on that or?
Mayor, I think to April's point, I mean, I think we can at least get an estimate and come back and discuss that. And then it could also be something that is done in coordination if, if and when we hear back on the Grizzly Lane funding is where my head was at, is that at least to Ryan's point, let's get a number to it and look at our street funds, see what it looks like, but then we should know more about that grant application by that point as well. If that is funded, then it would absolutely, for sure, make sense.
Is it a detriment to the project going to bid by having that as an alternate?
Mayor Fitzom, if we want to look at doing that, I would prefer not to tie it to this project for timing reasons and also just the intent of the funding. And I think it'd be easier to include it with our overlay package and our overlay project and get a separate bid for this location based off of those numbers potentially. And I, I mean, let me think through that one a little bit more and see how we could best incorporate that. The intent of the grant that we've applied for would be to change the grades on Grizzly in order to help, like I said, reduce that flooding severity on Grizzly. And so if we're looking strictly at just the pavement management, I'm not sure that falls under this funding. It would fall more, I think, under our overlay project.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will look for a motion on the plan and authorization to bid. We have a motion to approve the plan and authorization to bid. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. And I guess Alex, maybe if we can amend that motion to offer the flexibility that was within design?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve with the flexibility of engineering to accommodate as necessary.
Mayor Fitzom, can we also add contingents on obtaining the easements?
Contingent upon obtaining the two easements as stated.
Still second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the plan as presented, granting the flexibility at a lot-level design. Is that accurate? As well as contingent on the two easements obtained on the north side and authorization to bid. Any discussion or questions on that?
Discussion?
Yeah.
I just want to commend April and the team that has gone through this. We expedited government at its fastest that I could see. I mean, we got to the state, they came back, they understood the urgency of this project and the severity of it. They came back with funds to help us, which I thank our legislators in our area. The neighbors went to bat and overall, the urgency and the severity of it was, you know, how we dealt with it was great. So I thank you for, and I think the way that the neighborhood came together and talked about ideas was wonderful. So I'm being a resident in the wilds in the area, so I appreciate that as a resident as much as a council member. So thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Counsel, we're on to department reports. First up is PD.
Mayor Member, council, you have our monthly report.
Any questions for PD?
I do.
Tim?
How are the dogs working out? Getting along with each other?
They really don't train together. They're two different animals, but yeah. We actually look at the chief of the new poll or schedule, kind of, is trying to keep them on opposite ships. So we have a kennel in the garage, that's really not an issue with that. Kurt and Echo, they're pretty new to being working on the road and working on their craft. Everybody's probably met. Karen and Kimber, and I think the public has fallen in love with both of those and that's been awesome. I think you'll see the other benefits to Kurt and Echo training here hopefully shortly.
Excellent, thank you.
Don't confuse the two. Any other questions for PD? Thank you. Fire?
Mayor, members of council, in front of you, you have monthly report for fire. One note, I guess I made in the report and just want to talk about overall numbers this year, we had pretty steep increase from last year. Last year was a rare decrease in call volume. If you look at the four-year graph, we're still on track, but we are up forty-three percent in calls at this point at the halfway point of the year. Any questions to have to answer?
Any questions for fire department?
Do you have any plans on taking first next year in the tug-of-war?
Well, it's good to see some people read the packet.
I did, yeah.
We do, we have a lot of plans. We're working in depth right now.
I liked how you positioned that. We safely took second. I just also would comment too, it just, it seems like staff member or monitor is doing a great job with shared resources and I just think that's a great efficient use of staff time. And so it's great to see the updates in both reports, kind of commenting, kind of how she's helping both you guys in different areas and aspects. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Engineering?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. You have a report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for engineering tonight? Seeing none, thank you. Public Works?
Because I said it four times. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. You have the public works report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for public works? Good enough easy, thank you. Community development?
Mayor, members of the council, you have my monthly report. And Anna thought I would be keen to include that it's also the IT report, which is non-existent as you can tell. April, sorry for the delay. We did run through it this morning, but as you can tell, when Rob's not here, it sometimes doesn't function properly. So next time he'll be here and I will be gone. So that's why my monthly report is on this meeting. Just one thing that I wanted to include is that this week we have a Project Maxwell meeting with DED, so that is exciting for all of us here and staff have been working very hard on that. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for community development? Thank you. City commission updates?
None at this time.
All right, city council committee updates, miscellaneous business. Tim?
I think nothing tonight except the mowing looks greater on the city. I mean, as much as grass is growing, I think Public Works has done a great job keeping up. I was out at Pinecone Park and man is out of hit, no pun intended. It's just packed every night. So great job.
Jill?
Nothing tonight.
Alex?
Nothing tonight.
Judd?
Nothing tonight.
I don't have anything, the one thing I would say is someone, I think, took it upon themselves to decorate Pinecone with American flags. And I had a bunch of people reach out asking who did it and how do they support them next year? So I don't know who it is. But whoever did it, if they, I guess, come forward, there's a lot of people that want to support it and see more of it, so.
We did talk, pardon me, mayor, we did talk internally when we go to mow, collect them, of course, because they're in the boulevard.
Sure.
And we're curious if somebody will reach out to reclaim them.
Yeah.
I'll keep you guys posted if we do here.
No, I think it looks great. It was fun to see. That's all I have. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?